According to the UNEP Global Cooling Watch Report, prepared in the framework of the Cool Coalition, passive cooling can actually cut future demand for cooling by up to 24%, saving 3 trillion and avoided equipment costs for consumers and countries, and also reducing emissions by 1.3 billion tonnes of CO2. And importantly, it's only if you combine passive cooling with other strategies, such as energy efficiency and the HFC phase down, that you can protect an additional 3.5 billion people from extreme heat. And that was also one of the findings from the UNEP Global Cooling Watch Report. So how do we define passive cooling? And we consider it to include, of course, shading, natural ventilation, building orientation, cool paints, nature-based solutions like green roofs. And while there might be a debate about what constitutes passive cooling, I would encourage us to adopt the UN's definition, as per the Secretary General at UNEP, and try to focus on some of the key priorities, like understanding the barriers. You know, why is passive cooling so often overlooked? We really need to enforce building energy codes from developers to policymakers, and ensure that these codes and certificates actually account for the value passive cooling can provide. I think thinking on another priority is linking passive cooling to resilience and affordability. With heat waves and blackouts becoming more common, passive cooling can protect people, as I've mentioned, and also reduce the intensive energy and the cooling pressure on the grid. And this is particularly vital for the most vulnerable, like schools, social housing, health centers. And then thinking at the building scale and beyond. So looking also at the urban scale, what happens around the building and lowering outdoor temperatures through passive cooling to make cities and neighborhoods more livable and protect those who can't actually afford air conditioners. Addressing retrofits, of course. So we know that 170 billion square meters of building space is currently existing in developing countries, most of which needs retrofitting for passive cooling. And so we need to try to have faster code implementation to keep up with the developments and reduce the costs, so we don't have to retrofit everything. And then, of course, using global momentum. So with 71 countries having signed the pledge to establish building codes that include passive cooling by 2030, I think now we have a really good momentum to act. And similarly, with the Buildings Breakthrough and the Declaration de Chaille, which my colleague Jonathan will talk about, I think we really can leverage this momentum through this working group to work together across sectors and silos and support countries to promote passive cooling and stakeholders across the value chain, making buildings more comfortable and resilient, while also reducing energy demand and CO2 emissions. So with that, I'd like to thank you and for coming together to tackle this extremely important topic and hand over to my colleague Jonathan. Thanks.
Thank you, Lily. Hello, everyone. So I mean, I'm gonna add a little bit to Lily. I'm happy to see, actually, this collaboration starting. I mean, I remember that we had a first meeting when we were actually having the Buildings and Climate Forum here in Paris. And I saw there was already a pretty strong big interest by many of our joint groups, whether they're coming from the Cool Coalition side or the Global ABC coming together on this topic. And it's a very important topic. And you know that the building sector is one of those that is a very, like we call it often, a sleeping giant in terms of emissions overall and the impact it has and also the potential it probably has in terms of reducing emissions overall and tackling overall climate change. I mean, a very critical sector. And of course, currently, the largest share of emissions is related to energy-related processes. So and the biggest share of that is actually more on the operational energy side. And I think what is important to look is that when we are talking about passive design, we really need to think about, okay, how can we build buildings that actually require as little energy as possible when they are operational? And of course, we need to look at that in the picture of our changing climate today and think about the future, where most of our countries are actually, the climate is warming, but also some countries are having more and longer and longer heat waves and will also require cooling more and more. And so the design of the building becomes a very important, a very important element for us overall to really look into and to push when we think about that. I mean, a number of countries, of course, today have energy building codes, but most of those energy building codes are very much looking at, you know, energy operations, not that much yet into design. And even when they exist, those energy building codes, in some cases, they might not be yet ambitious enough. And then, most of the time, they don't really integrate any elements on passive cooling, passive design-related issues. So this is a very important area for us to try to influence overall. And it was already mentioned, of course, that looking at the Global South, I mean, and Lily mentioned it, that a lot of people basically won't have access to air conditioners. Basically, those equipments are too costly for a lot of the populations. But at the same time, they still need to live in buildings and live comfortably. And there is actually a number of existing, I would say, vernacular technology. I mean, people knew how to build their buildings in the climate in which they were living before. And some people were living in the desert or living in areas where it actually was pretty hot and air conditioners were not existing. And sub-solutions already existed. And I think we've shifted a bit with, you know, thinking that we had found the miracle solutions with concrete steel and glass and basically air conditioners. And then we said, okay, we can build any building that we want, that it's always going to be comfortable, so we can build fast and comfortable buildings. But now we are seeing the effects of this wonderful solution that we had found that is not so wonderful anymore. And that's where we probably need to look back a little bit at the number of these approaches that we had before, where maybe we were living closer with, I would say, well, our environment and nature and trying to kind of think a little bit more about mimicking what nature does. And that's where I think the whole kind of passive design and passive cooling comes in as a very important element overall for us. And I mean, what I find interesting in this is, I mean, I often say that when we talk about mitigation, for me, mitigation is just another strategy of adaptation. In the end, why are we changing the way we are using our energy? And why are we changing our energy systems? And why are we thinking about that? Because we need to adapt to the new climates and this evolution, so we need to change. So I see this whole part of, you know, basically mitigation being part of adaptation. And when we talk, of course, about cooling, I mean, cooling is a lot about adaptation at the same time. So that's where I like this kind of, you know, it's a very interesting topic to work on because it really brings the mitigation and adaptation tend us more closer together. And indeed, and the important thing is to integrate both when we think about climate action. So of course, this is about passive design, green roofs, façades. I mean, there are a number of technologies already out there. There are also, as I mentioned, things we can learn from vernacular buildings and from techniques that existed before. The most important is that we can push this agenda today together. And I'm very pleased that we have a big group of experts in the area that are ready to push this agenda with us. Was mentioned, I mean, under the Global ABC, we've now been for more than eight years pushing the Buildings Agenda. You know, the Global ABC has been growing. It has shown that actually we have today a strong community in the buildings and construction area that really wants to tackle climate action in the sector. And we have made some major, I think, achievements lately, whether it's with the Buildings Breakthrough or, of course, the Declaration de Chaille, which was signed at the Buildings and Climate Forum, which has shown that actually a number of countries really want to also see how they can transform the buildings and construction sector. There are more and more countries that actually have been now looking, I would say, at their new NDCs. A number of them already have mentioned to me that the building side was absolutely not really well-integrated in the previous versions and that they are going to give a stronger push for this coming up, coming NDCs. And I think all the work that we've been doing over the years actually has played an important role here. And talking to a number of, you know, more of our Global South countries, while the cooling topic is very important. And the passive cooling is one of the first things that comes up when you talk to them because they all know that they will need to find solutions for their population to actually design the buildings that will be adapted to our future climates and comfortable for their people. So just to say, I think this is a very important group overall for us to work with. And I'm very glad that we are keeping the momentum here together to push this agenda. We are lucky that both secretariats from the Cool Coalition and the Global ABC are sitting together in UNEP and in the same unit, actually, in UNEP, in the city's unit. So it really facilitates the work and the collaboration. And we are very glad, of course, to have Genai that sits between both our teams and is really pushing with us for this overall agenda. So I really hope that we'll have a very successful working group where we can deliver a number of elements that will help the countries progressing on integrate passive cooling for buildings overall. And I'll stop here. Thank you all.
Yeah, thank you very much, Lily and Jonathan, for their fantastic opening remarks. So now we are moving on to the co-chairs introductions. So first of all, we have asked our partners to do the, to answer their member survey previously. And there was one question that if you want to be a co-chair or not. And up to today, we have received the interest from the three organizations. And we have discussed with these three organizations representatives. And we decided on these three co-chairs today. So we want to introduce three of our co-chairs. And first, we have Rajan Rawal from CEP to University. So Rajan Rawal is a professor at CEP to University and senior advisor at the Center for Advanced Research in Building Science and Energy, or CARBSE, and also the CEP to Research and Development Foundation, or CRDF. He was the executive director of CARBSE between 2006 and 2021. He worked with BATS, a silver foundation for studies and research in environmental design before joining the Faculty of Design CEP to University, Ahmedabad. He taught design and construction courses as part of the undergraduate programs. And he teaches energy-efficient built environments, energy policy, energy modeling, and simulations at the postgraduate programs. His current focus of work is on passive design strategies, net-zero energy buildings and communities, urban microclimates, embodied carbon in buildings, personal thermal comfort systems and practice of adaptive thermal comfort models. And next, we have Lorenzo Pagano from Politecnico di Milano. So Lorenzo Pagano is a professor in building physics at Politecnico di Milano. He has the Master of Science in Physics, PhD in Energy Engineering. And he is also the visiting researcher at Lawrence Berkeley National Laboratory in Energy Economics and Regulation. At Politecnico di Milano, Lorenzo has led a research group called End Use Efficiency Research Group since 1997, where he addresses low-energy buildings, comfort models, analysis of energy efficiency technologies and programs, efficiency and sufficiency policies. He is also a co-founder of Master RIDEF, where he works on efficiency renewal both and energy planning as a vice-director, previously a director. And he is currently the supervisor of eight PhD candidates so far. And he has participated, promoted, and directed more than 50 research projects and studies funded by public and private bodies on various aspects on buildings, analysis, and simulation, buildings monitoring, a comfort surveys, and energy economics and planning, with a special focus on end-use efficiency and sufficiency. And as a last, we have the HOOP-Kaisers from TNO and CIB. So HOOP Kaiser is a manager, circular constructions and international collaboration at TNO. That is a Dutch organization for applied scientific research. And HOOP has chaired and participated in several national, European, and NATO working groups in the field of safety, lifetime extension, energy efficiency digitalization, and artificial intelligence. HOOP is a member of the European Construction and Sustainable Building Environment Technology Platform and Building Smart International, and a board member of the European Network of Building Research Institutes, and also Built for People and CIB, namely, International Conference for Buildings. In his role, HOOP chairs several working groups with focus on innovation in the construction sector and international knowledge sharing. So with this introduction, I'd like to hear a couple of words from our co-chairs. So please, Rajan, Lorenzo, HOOP, maybe starting with Rajan, please.
Thanks, Genai. I think this is a great opportunity for us to bring the knowledge which many of us are working and gathering since quite some time, at the same time exchanging the notes and how do we really solve the problem, as Lily and Jonathan mentioned about cooling, especially in the developing worlds. I would be happy to work as a co-chair and work with my other co-chair to bring whatever object we have in place. And I'm sure that next few years we'll be able to activate quite a few activities around the passive strategies and such and forth. Thank you.
Thank you, Rajan. Over to Lorenzo.
Well, I think the introductions have said all. We are really glad to have this opportunity under UNEP to put together our competences, the competences of the colleagues that are here and trying to rationalize what we know, make it available in a better way and more readily to governments and all the practitioners and learn from each other, certainly. So looking forward to this work and collaboration.
Thank you, Lorenzo, and over to HOOP.
Hello, everybody. Well, the name and the background was already mentioned. I'm from TNO, Research Development Organization in the Netherlands. When you think of the Netherlands, it's up north. It's quite cold normally, concerned to a number of the other aspects that were discussed. However, also here, the heat is becoming more and more important. But more than the Dutch situation, I'm also representing CIB, Collaboration Internationale Batiment. More than 53 countries working on anything that's related to the built environment to make it more sustainable. And especially a number of the task groups are actually focused on this with a lot of people already. So I am bringing in that information. In the meantime, I'm very curious to learn about the things that are within the other participants. So looking forward to it.
Thank you, HOOP. So now we are running out of time. So maybe, and also we have a lot of participants. So previously, we wanted to do the round introduction, but given the number of the participants, please, if you have time, like, please put your names and organizations in the chat box so that we can share who is attending and who you are from, where you are from. So that would be very helpful if you can write your introduction in the chat so that we can share. So but thank you very much for attending this meeting from across the world, even though there is a time difference. So so we want to move on to the next agenda, which is the Working Group Overview Presentation. And so this is basically a joint working group, as I mentioned, of the Cool Coalition and the Global ABC, and working on the passive cooling for building, targeting at the hot climate, where cooling demand is dominant. So this is the work scope at this moment. So let me briefly talk about the context where this passive cooling agenda fit to this Cool Coalition and Global ABC. And so basically, from the Cool Coalition side, we launched the Global Cooling Pledge at COP28 together with the COP28 UAE Presidency. So this Global Cooling Pledge involves over 70 government signatories and over 60 supporters from international organizations, finance institutions, and industry. It marks the first, world-first collective effort to improve energy efficiency and reduce emissions in the cooling sector. And in this Global Cooling Pledge, passive cooling is, of course, recognized as one of the critical areas to address. And at the same timing of the Global Cooling Pledge, we launched Global Cooling Watch Report. And this report basically demonstrates the pathway to achieve net-zero emissions from cooling and lays out sustainable cooling measures in three areas, which are the passive cooling, higher energy efficiency standards, and faster phase-down of climate warming refrigerant. And this report was released in support of the Global Cooling Pledge at COP28, as I mentioned, and plans to be updated annually to track the policy progress on sustainable cooling, which of course includes passive cooling. And we also have the Secretary General's call to action on extreme heat. And he basically insists that extreme heat is having extreme impact on people and planet. The world must rise to the challenge of the rising temperatures. And with this call, we, Cool Coalition, is working for the sustainable cooling, especially, yeah. And passive cooling is one of the agenda. And from the Global ABC concept, context, so we launched the Buildings Breakthrough at COP28, which was co-organized by France and Morocco. And this target is net-zero emission and resident buildings are new normal by 2030. And today, 29 countries and European commissions and 32 international organizations and their initiatives have announced their support. And the Passive Cooling Working Group is expected to contribute to several building breakthroughs, priority actions, and their work stream. And we also had the Buildings and Climate Global Forum in March 2024, co-organized by France. And in this forum, we gathered for the first time the ministers and high-level representatives of key organizations to initiate the new impetus in international collaboration for buildings, decarbonization, and resilience. As a outcome, Declaration de Chaille has been endorsed by 64 countries as of September 2024, where passive strategy is delineated as a crucial measure to achieve net-zero energy buildings, thus meeting the Paris Agreement. So this is the background. And from here, I hand over to Lorenzo, who's going to explain about mission statements and concept of this working group.
Yeah, sure. Thanks, Genai, and thanks all. So yeah, the mission statement, which has been elaborated and discussed and approved as a title, "Passive First for All", so probably both the technical features and the social features are in the title. So the group aims to accelerate the provision and achievement of thermal comfort through exchange of knowledge, mapping of knowledge, generation of knowledge where it will be possible and necessary dissemination, and also favoring implementation of these passive first strategies to reduce the dependence on active cooling. At the same time, the issue is technical, is design, is assessment, but it also the provision of healthy, low-energy, affordable, resilient buildings, involvement of all building stakeholders, consideration of the socio-economic benefits, while at the same time, obviously, contributing to the environmental commitments of the international community. Next slide. So for doing this work, we might use an indicator like energy need for cooling as a contributor to more global indicators and objectives that we can find already in the UN reports and commitments. So to do the basic part within those general commitments. This is an important indicator because it describes the quality of the building fabric, of the building geometry. The definition can be found, for example, on the ISO database. And it is defined as the heat to be extracted from a thermally-conditioned space to maintain the intended space-temperature conditions during a certain period of time. So it's the energy to be extracted from the space to achieve a certain comfort scenario. Next slide. And it is important because it is an indicator which is independent of the presence and type of conditioning systems. So it's exactly what we need. It focuses on the envelope, the fabric. And here we have an example, just a picture of all the indoor air, which is the system considered in this indicator, is interacting with the building fabric, the envelope, and it is interacting with external air. And we have ways to, through design and control of those elements, we can reduce the energy needed for cooling, so the residual energy to be extracted from the indoor air via passive or active systems. We go on to and obviously, this building fabric, good design and good geometry are meant to deliver these intended space conditions. And space conditions which are appropriate can be explicitly defined through the choice of comfort models which are in line with passive design, like the elevated air velocity and the adaptive comfort model, which are now completely explicitly available in the most recent comfort standards. So they have the same dignity as any other approach to achieving comfort in summer. And I think I can stop here and then over to my co-chairs.
Thanks, Lorenzo. I think it's my time to take things a little forward regarding the scope of the working group. And quite a bit of discussion took place before we came up with the one-shot chart, or rather, metrics under which we will be working. And as stated earlier, that focus is primarily going to be passive cooling strategies or passive strategies which will help us achieve thermal comfort and reduce the demand, which basically will turn into energy savings. However, when we start looking at that, we are also very conscious about the kind of change taking place that means that even in the future, buildings should be able to provide a comfortable range of temperature and humidity conditions inside. So we are also very consciously looking at resilience part as one of the scope of this group. Not just about just taking care of the humans, but also while we try to design passive buildings, we also need to be mindful about the kind of natural resources which we'll be using or even for retrofitting, which we'll be using. Both aim is how do we really start restoring the environment? And this primarily may lead us to some more exploration. regarding building materials, use or recycling of them and bringing them back to to the environment with the appropriate manner. So that's the sort of four aims which we started with. And then we started looking at how do we really start working? So I request Genai to come to the next slide, which primarily talks about the the three aspects of how do we really achieve this aim? Number one would be a climate, present climate context, as I mentioned, and a future climate context. Not just about relative humidity and temperature changes, but also seasonal changes and amount of time it takes for change of season, which also has become extremely important parameter to start looking at it. How do we start looking at it various scales? Do we really need to look at the only buildings or the kind of heat rejection we are going to see from buildings? Whenever we use active systems, what will happen to a city? Which may lead to some kind of island's effect, which already we have seen in many cities across the world. So building scale and larger scale at neighborhood and at the city scale. We did talk about operation of ceiling fans in earlier slide, but then you also have an opportunity to look at the operation of the windows. So when we start operating the windows, unless we have a better air quality outside, we might not be able to take advantage of a comfortable range to complete the the temperatures which we are going to have. So that's how we are looking at the neighborhood scale and city scale. And then at some point in time, at the personal scale, that do we really need to cool down entire volume of building? Do we have an opportunity to just provide a comfortable system in and around person who is occupying either a desk or a pet? So we are, we'll be looking at various scales and through the various typologies, residential, non-residential and partially industrial. Industrial primarily where a lot of heat rejection which takes place from the machines and a manufacturing process. How do you really shield the human beings from some of the negative impact of those heat rejections? So these are the three, I would say, horizontal axis under which we will be operating and gathering our activities. And then a three vertical which we will be looking at. As as I said, start with the passive design strategies. And that is been divided into sort of two parts. Is one is spatial design strategies that due to orientation or due to various volumetric exploration or even orientation and a shading design, how do you really start downsizing the cooling demand? So that is where we are looking at spatial design focused passive design strategies. And second is through various building materials and construction techniques. Again, here, material and in construction is been separated out because the way you use material, same material in different fashion may lead to different kind of heat transfer values. Hence, we will be looking at materials and construction, both independently and together under passive design strategies, which is a second vertical. So here, the spatial design and construction material technologies is just for parity of the thought. Not just at the design stage, but also how do you start operating these things? Design strategies which may get implemented at the design state, but then again, we need to have certain amount of caution or operational facilities there. You can start looking at either window operation or any kind of systems which have been put in a place during the design stage. Third vertical, which we have added after quite a bit of discussion, is an operational strategies of. Often, we have seen that design strategies do get implemented at the design stage, but operational strategies also needs equal amount of the focus. So that's what broad understanding about the scope which we have derived for this particular working group. The next slide talks about what we will be doing, which is basically the outputs where some of the work will lead to decision maker in terms of policy guidelines, which may turn into standards or some kind of baselines. Education within the academic environment, which is curriculum, and education outside the academic environment, which is basically online tools for practitioner. And what kind of indicators we can use and database which we will be talking about. Often, we also have seen variation in terminologies which people have used across the across the world. So there would be some efforts in harmonizing some of these terminology as well as a part of the scope. So that's from the slide. The next slide, Genai, would be in terms of how interested member will work and what will they work towards. So this is primarily a learning and networking community for practicing the passive strategies. It will start primarily with the exchange of knowledge, either projects or events or even a new research papers or even the earlier research papers which are having a high impact. We'll start looking at the 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 theory into the practice, which is disseminating the experiences through projects and best practices. Hopefully, we will have a reasonable amount of material available in terms of online toolkit. There is a separate, a group is also working extensively on developing some of these online resources. Most of these would be peer reviewed. We also would be looking at new policies and their peer reviews and regulations and so on and so forth. There will be chance to look at some of the educational curriculum related activities and we can discuss how do we really train next generation of professionals. Seminars and webinars would be part of the on the working group activities and also primarily at some point in time, we'll be looking at a new knowledge production, looking at some of the partners who are working extensively in the passive design strategies, both ways, at the at the design level as well as the operational level and at both scales as well, just at the building scale or personal scale or at the at the city scale. So that is what we would be, we would be working on. I think I would hand it over to Hoop for next couple of slides. Thank you. Is it, can I? Yeah, thanks.
All right. Thank you very much, Rajan and Lorenzo. As was stressed already by Rajan, it's really a working group. So we're really looking to the participants to bring in their knowledge, bring in their information and really start sharing ideas and work towards solutions that are then usable by by others in the field. So the structure is really about learning and networking. It's about bringing this this information together and ultimately work towards guidelines that somebody can then translate into standards and can can be used. So as was mentioned, the co-chairs actually are from two universities. And maybe you from TNO, it's Research Development Organization. But I'm also representing CIB and there with the number of universities, but those research institutes are actually a factor fifty, larger than ninety percent. But they will bring in their knowledge through me, but also through dedicated sessions that we're going to plan, amongst other on age based solutions that could fit into these ideas. So once again, it's really about the working group members bringing in the information. What we'll do is we'll start sessions like this, but really on on detailed information, on detailed sessions, typically every two months. And we'll invite people who are willing to share something, then to to breathe it, filling actually the diagram that was shown before by Rajan. So we really have to, as we go along, look exactly in what topic we're going to do when. But that's the actually the knowledge that's available and sharing it. But the right side of the diagram actually is really the needs from the different regions and a number of countries already identified that they are willing to bring in their needs. I think it's later on in the slide, Genai, where at least three of the countries will bring in their information. But of course, if other countries would like to participate in that, you're more than welcome. So we have another two or three years to do this together. So the co-chairs, together with the working group members, bring in the knowledge, also working group members bringing in their needs from the country's perspective, then bring it all together in the online toolkit, which will be hosted by the ABC Global together with UNEP at the UNEP website. So going from this one to the next slide, a little bit more detail on what we plan to do. It's really about starting to do this member presentation to build up actually our portfolio using the diagram used earlier. We actually have a first peer review already planned with one of the countries by the end of this years, this year. A lot will be done digitally to make access to the information easy for everybody. But we also plan some dedicated workshops aligned with ongoing already planned live meetings from different organizations. For example, at CIB, we have our World Business Conference next year in May in Purdue USA. We plan to do a live session there in conjunction with the TAF Group ninety seven on age based solutions. But also it's open for other ones. So we plan to at least hopefully one live meeting yearly in conjunction to already planned sessions to limit travel cost, travel extent, but also of course the impact. And then work towards this database where everybody can pull the information from that. That's the baseline activities. And on top of that, we'll do special activities like developing a passive cooling strategy model. Everybody can pull from, but the special activities then will need additional authors. Could be one of the three of us, so either Lorenzo, Rajan or I, but it could also be one of the other ones in the working group. Once again, it's active participation. So you could actually apply for that or say, well, this is something I would like to bring in. Then we'll do a check, does it fit and where does it fit in the timeline? So really interactive. Ultimately making sure that within the next two or three years, we really get this this movement ongoing by sharing the information, but also creating tools available through the website. So a lot of words to explain, we have started, but I'm happy to see everybody. And interactive, so bring in your ideas. And the next one will be planned, I think in two months. But I think you'll take over now, Geno.
Yeah, thanks Lorenzo, Rajan and Hoop for your presentation. And so for the rest of the couple of slide, I will go through briefly. So we are currently, yeah, as Hoop mentioned, we are currently planning a regular call, like potentially bi-monthly. And we are, we have the one, one hour meeting. So so basically, we are planning to invite our partners to showcase their project or experiences and to be discussed among these working group members. But on the other hand, in the beginning and also in the closing, we want to, we want to increase the interactions from our members. So maybe we can ask our partners to announce their project or their events, or their publication, or whatever things that might be worth sharing on passive cooling. And also the, yeah, if we develop like subgroup, we can invite those members to say the a couple of words on their work stream. And and also we are planning to develop the online toolkit and which can be mentioned. Also, peer review activities and et cetera. So basically, it's a, it's a flexible arrangement. But it it'll be nice if we can at least have the regular meeting where all of us to attend and share their knowledge, including the networking. And so about the working group website, we are currently discussing internally at UNEP. But at least we are planning to have the online database, like both Global ABC and Cool Queso website. We are figuring out how to manage this. But basically, we have already this this website ready on the, on the, on our website. So which explained about a little bit about the background of this working group. So feel free to reach out to our website if you are interested in. And we hope we can accumulate our knowledge. Yeah, we are planning to upload this meeting content to this, to this website as well. And also we want to, yeah, upload our members' presentations if it's possible in the future. Okay, so so this is the end of the the overview of the presentation. And now we want to give the floor to the keynote. So I want to give the floor to the, so Diana from the IPCC Vice Chair. But let me hand over to Lorenzo to to introduce Diana and also her assistants and Eva, so to do these presentations.
Yeah, it's a, it's a pleasure to have them both. If we have both, maybe Diana is still under a commitment with the Japanese government now. So anyway, I, I will introduce them both briefly. Diana Urgevorsas is a professor at the Department of Environmental Sciences and Policy at the Central European University. And since July last year, she is the Vice Chair of the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change. So she is now actively working to to the preparation, launch and start of the next assessment report. So lots of work in coordinating the scientific community on climate analysis. Already in the sixth assessment cycle, the previous cycle, she has been acting as Vice Chair of the Working Group Third on Mitigation. And she has been a coordinating lead author in the Assessment Report Four and Five, the previous ones. She has a PhD from the University of California, Berkeley and the University of California and has worked at the Lawrence Berkeley Laboratory. She has served as United Nations Scientific Expert in the Expert Group on Climate Change. And she led the buildings related work in the Global Energy Assessment. And she has been working in many research projects, in many review panels for orientating research on buildings and climate. Eva, Eva Vascuti, she is an environmental biologist and a postdoctoral scholar at the Central European University, where she is collaborating for research and for teaching with Professor Diana Urgevorsas. She has a PhD in biology and is, her research focuses on behavioral ecology, evolutionary ecology and bioacoustics. She has been, she has had the position in the Institute of Ecology and Botany. She has collaborated to many climate adaptation projects under programs like LIFE. And so she she works in interdisciplinary way between academic research and practical application, environmental solutions. So I think it will be a pleasure to hear from them or from one of them, depending on how the time arrangements have made it possible. Thanks a lot for for this contribution, which is extremely important for us, for motivating our work. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Lorenzo, and thank you very much, Genai. Unfortunately, it's only me here. I was texting with Diana and she is apologizing really, really much for every. I was texting with Diana and she is apologizing really, really much for everyone. But yes, as Lorenzo already told, she is in Japan. And she was invited to a meeting or a dinner, I'm not sure, with the Japanese Deputy Minister and also with the IPCC Chief Negotiators. So I think this was an opportunity for what she cannot say no, because these are places where she can really make an impact. So she is there and definitely I will not be a really good substitution for her, but I will do my best to give you her wisdom and knowledge on the topic. So yes, let's start with the first slide, please. It's, I hope it's working.
Just a moment.
Yes, this is from the IPCC report, actually the IPCC synthesis report. It used to be called Thermal Comfort Days, but recently Diana likes to more call it Thermal Security Days, and you will see why. So the number of days each year where temperature and humidity conditions are naturally comfortable or secure for human activity. As global temperatures rise, these comfort days or security days are rapidly decreasing, especially in tropical and subtropical regions, as you can see on the little maps. But the map you see here shows the projected increase in hazardous heat humidity days under various warming scenarios. And in the middle, with the darker areas representing regions where extreme heat will become more frequent and severe. So this poses actually significant risk to human health and not only human health and well-being, but it can be actually also life-threatening. And particularly for vulnerable populations like children or elderly people. So it's definitely a condition which can lead to heat stress, illnesses and fatalities too. And on the next slide, please, Gennaro. It's again a map. This map highlights the so-called cooling gap in mega cities of the global south, projecting the significant increase in populations facing insufficient access to cooling. So by 2050, between, it's so small, but as far as I remember, 215 and 364 million people could be affected, depending on the scenario, which you can see there are three scenarios there. The largest disparities will be seen in Sub-Saharan Africa and South Asia, where up to 86% of urban population could lack adequate cooling. And it actually, it's not only cooling, but it's the excess of refrigerators also. And that's a pretty severe condition as well. So energy requirements for cooling also vary. Within SSP1 and SSP3, showing that in SSP1, higher energy demand due to population growth. While in SSP3, it highlights extreme vulnerabilities in cities like, for example, Lagos or Luanda, where low income and poor housing, low incomes and poor housing conditions will leave more people exposed to this heat stress. Next slide, please. So as we delve into the critical issue of climate adaptation, this chart represents a vital connection between heat degree days and access to air conditioning in various cities. On the left, you can observe the higher heat degree days. And in contrast, on the right, on the right side, this figure illustrates the stark differences in air conditioning access among populations. Actually, it categorized by GDP density. So significant disparities in access to cooling facilities exist. And it is heavily influenced by socioeconomic status. Next slide, please. Yes, this one is animated. So after the problem, I would like to come up with some kind of solutions. To address urgent need for thermal safety, especially for those living in energy poverty, we must adopt energy-efficient solutions. And here we have listed some key strategies. So first, we should enhance our green and blue infrastructure. This includes planting mature trees with extensive leaf coverage, and I will show later an example of that for you, actually also deep roots. And that should be tailored to our specific climate. These trees play a crucial role in cooling our urban environment. I will, yes, I will show an example for that for you later. The next solution could be to combat urban heat islands by utilizing reflective and high albedo surfaces. Lately, we are talking about also like, for example, smaller things like encouraging light-colored cars, the buying of light-colored cars, because that's something also can contribute to lower temperatures. It is essential to create shaded areas in public spaces where people gather, ideally using trees to minimize local heating. In addition, we must implement passive cooling techniques and ensure that all sun-exposed building surfaces, particularly windows, are shaded effectively. Another question is the passive ventilation. Passive ventilation can help to maintain airflow in both cities and buildings. High levels of insulation are critical as well. That allows heat to flow only from hot to cold by ideally incorporating heat recovery ventilation for buildings with significant internal heat gains. And lastly, by these solutions, we significantly improve thermal safety. We recognize that the residual thermal security gap may remain. And let me show you an example on the next slide. So there's gonna be a map of Budapest, capital of Hungary. Sorry, sorry for that. I don't know why it's not switching. So this is a land surface temperature. This photo was taken the 31st of August 2016 between 11:00 and 12:00 AM on a sunny day. And you can observe that temperatures might rise until or over 40 degrees. And if you put the next slide, you can see. Okay, so sorry, in the next slide, you can see the foliage intensity. And you can observe that the foliage intensity actually correlates strongly with the surface temperature. What means where we have more foliage, we have less temperature, I mean lower temperature. So that leads us to the next slide. That foliage intensity strongly correlates with surface temperature. That emphasizes the importance of working with nature. Abundant greenery captures carbon through living biomass and soils, mitigating climate change by enhancing urban resilience. Additionally, trees provide vital shading and cooling, making our cities more livable in a warming world. Beyond environmental benefits, access to nature spaces significantly improves well-being and mental health. That's what this picture shows for you. But on the next slide, I also wanted to incorporate a building example. And I wanted to look for a building that comes from a warmer region. So that's a building from Morocco. This paper is from 2023, and it explores the energy performance of the solar-powered net-zero energy building. So, yes, one more, please. Yeah, yes, thank you very much. So this building in Morocco, it achieved an annual self-sufficiency ratio of 1.25, which means that it produces actually more energy than it consumes. It also maintains a low energy use intensity, which supports its efficiency. And on the next slide, you can see that although it's a good solution for a building, it might face some challenges too. Because the annual thermal energy requirements for heating and cooling are 123.5 kilowatt-hours per square meter per year. So it means during summer months or during very, very warm months, cooling demands can exceed solar generation, which is impacting comfort. So overall, this study demonstrates that with effective design and renewable energy integration, achieving a net-zero energy status in a warm climate is feasible, although attention is needed for seasonal energy demands. And lately, I would like to speak to you about the locking effect. That was the idea of Lorenzo. And I just asked my colleague to update the data. So that's super fresh, just updated today. Actually, it's animated, but okay, just let's see the whole figure and I will try to say what's on that. So let's start by looking at the moderate sufficiency scenario, represented by this little yellow area there. This scenario assumes that we continue with our recent policies and make maybe only minor improvements to building retrofits. Essentially, it shows what happens if we stay on a path of small incremental changes without adopting major energy-saving technologies. And moving to that little greenish-blueish part there, that is the deep sufficiency scenario. So now take a look at that area and it shows, let me see, sorry. So this is where state-of-the-art technologies are applied to both retrofitting older buildings and constructing new ones. In this scenario, deep energy efficiency measures are implemented across the board, leading to a dramatic reduction of energy demand. If you can see, it's a little bit pale, but if you can see, the yellow arrow points out that under the moderate sufficiency scenario, we expect a 25% increase in total final energy demand by 2060 compared to today. And this is the result of only modest improvements in energy efficiency. Meanwhile, under the blue arrow that shows the deep sufficiency scenario, we project a 58% reduction in energy demand by 2060 compared to 2024 again. This reflects the impact of deep retrofits and the widespread adaptation of energy efficiency technologies. And if you switch against slides, oh, sorry, I would like to highlight a little bit the locking effect. So sorry, sorry for that. The locking effect represented by that lock symbol and the large gap between the yellow and the blue areas, can you just go one back? Sorry, I was too, yes, sorry, sorry, and thank you very much. So that large gap between the yellow and these greenish-blueish areas. If we don't push the deeper energy efficiency measures, we could be stuck with an 83% higher energy demand by 2060. In other words, we can kind of fail or stuck or we have the risk of locking ourselves into a future of much higher energy consumption, which could have been avoided with better policies and technologies. So it means that we could stuck by a really bad energy efficiency scenario. And my colleague, that's actually the next slide and the last slide. So my colleague calculated the locking effects for only, because the other figure was actually the total energy demand, and my colleague just calculated it for the final cooling energy demand of buildings. So that's the same effect actually, but only applies for the cooling of buildings. And that was my last slide. And thank you very much for your attention.
Yeah, thank you very much Eva for the fantastic presentations. And it's really nice to understand the global trend of the building and also the locking effect that encourages us to take a measure for that in the cooling sector as well. So now we have the 20 minutes left. So I want to give this floor to participants. To, if you have any questions on this special keynote, please feel free to come in and yeah, let's do the Q and A and or even your comments. Please raise your hand. Yeah, maybe Lorenzo could say some words first, yeah, to, yeah, open the discussion.
Yeah, sure. I think this, we had the presentation from Professor Diana during the European project, European African project, the result of Vincent Kieto with UN Habitat who participated to that project. And the discussion, Diana intervened to one of our webinars. And this concept of locking in, I mean, everything we do today is in buildings, is really deciding how building, the building stock will be for the next decades, 50 or even 100 years, depending on the building. So we are really blocking a big infrastructure, which we are, in many parts of the world, it will be, a large part of the building stock is still under construction and we built in the next decades. So what we choose to do is extremely important, because it's not for one year. It's for the rest of the century, is fixing the building infrastructure for the next century. So very important to lock in in the right future and not in the wrong future. It's really a picture of how important is what we decide together, technical people, policymakers, users of the building. Essentially, in a few decades, we are deciding a lot of our future. So that for me was one important, very important element. There are a few papers from Diana and other colleagues, which quantify this locking effect and compare a future where we go for the best state-of-the-art technologies every time we build a new building or do a retrofit with the old word. So I guess if others have curiosity about this global scenario, the cool sanctuaries in the cities or other things, please come in with questions or comments or your case studies. Which I see someone sending in the chat. But if you want to intervene also live to underline some of the case studies or studies, analysis that you are, that you would like to add to the discussion, please.
So I can see some hands. So, okay. So, okay, Vincent, yeah, please come in.
Yes, good afternoon, good morning. Colleague Vincent Kithio from UN Habitat. Thank you so much for this initiative. I just want to turn my voice and the data of UN Habitat to say that this is indeed very important initiative in the sense that, particularly from the Global South, where we estimate that 70 to 75% of the building that will be standing in 2050, just something, just 25 years from now, are yet to be built. And therefore, considering the rising price of energy, at the same time also the climate change challenges, it is really important that we start looking at passive building methods. From the experience, of course, we have been working on this subject for quite some years now. At the beginning, there was not interest, but today the interest is growing. More and more people are looking into this solution. They are looking into cooling their houses using less energy. So it become, it's becoming very important to continue pushing for this cooling coalition using natural resources. I worked sometime back with Lili on another program that was also looking into how we could advance the passive building methods. But again, today, more and more countries are also revising their building code, their regulation, their standard, to include this. It is also true that there is a rising interest in Green Building Council just because the demand is there. I just want to say that we at UN Habitat, following this demand, we have decided to sort of develop another platform. It will not be a replication of existing platform. I know that there are quite a number of platforms that exist. But we want to have a one-stop shop on net-zero carbon architecture for tropical countries, where someone can go there, look at what it's all about, the definition, what are the literature that has been developed. I know that the Global ABC has developed quite a lot of extensive material. I know that universities have also developed quite a number of them. There are also tools today, assessment tools, like Edge of ISE and many other tools. So we want to put together all these tools, all this literature, and also explain on the simple words and so as to demystify the concept of passive building design. So again, I just wanted to say that once we are planning to launch this platform, not really to launch, but just to present the platform during our World Urban Forum, that is coming in just two weeks from now in Cairo, from the 4th to the 8th November, where we want to say that, given the magnitude of the buildings that are being designed as we speak and they are being constructed as we speak and will be constructed in the next 25 years, we really need to incorporate all these elements in it. Because what is happening in the Global South is still in the paper, but there are still business as usual going on. So we need some, fundamentally, some changes. And to do this change, we need to have platforms like this to discuss and share examples, share best practices. Because in this group, for example, there are experts that have been doing very tremendous activity. We need to share those activities. So just to thank, and then once we have an advanced draft, we will also share with the platform, and this will be our contribution. Of course, we'll be also attending this working group, share our knowledge, and also benefit from what other people are doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Vincent. Yeah, I see another participant willing to intervene. Please, Yan Dagan. I'm sorry, I can't pronounce well. Do you want to intervene?
That's perfect. Yes, good day, everyone. I am Zarvo Janmarion, Research Officer and Lead of Nature-Based Solution Projects at Construction and Research Centre at National Research Council, Canada. So the reason that I say I want to intervene is because we are doing a project and we are looking at the effects of greenery and enhancing vegetation and using the cool building envelope materials and the combination of these two effects on five Canadian cities. So we are doing the simulation, and we wanted to see which one of these strategies are really going to make a difference and are going to reduce the effects of urban heat islanding. The reasons that we are doing is, as you may know, Canada is warming twice the global rate. And most of our houses and structures are not equipped with air conditioning system. And our generation is getting older. So we have a high number of heat-related mortality and morbidity in our cities. For instance, in a heat wave hit a dome in 2021 in Vancouver, throughout three consecutive days, we had more than 700 deaths in only the city of Vancouver, which everybody knows that has a very mild condition and the weather is always very good. It shouldn't be that hot, and the people's bodies are not adapted to this much change in high temperature. So all saying, all these unfortunate disastrous events that happen in Canadian cities, we look at increasing the greenery and vegetation on walls, roofs, in urban areas. So and we are also looking at enhancing and using the materials that have a higher solar reflectivity. And we are comparing one strategy versus the other for each city, because we have a different climatic zone from coast to coast. Canada is very wide. One way, we have a very cold, harsh season, and the other, in the other coast, we have a very mild Mediterranean condition. And as looking at these strategies, for instance, in these cities, we come up with some very good results that I would like to share with you in any of the meetings that you say. Pete, I would like to talk about these results and share what we are doing in terms of the design and construction and maintenance of nature-based solution strategies that we are looking towards and we are working with other governments body in Canada to implement these techniques in our cities.
Thanks a lot. That this tells us that in every, at every latitude, we have challenges and growing challenges, and this work can really be a transfer of knowledge between all these experiences in the North and the South. Any other comments? And I see many, many contributions coming in the chat. That's great. We start collecting the most recent analysis that the members of the group are performing. I see solar protection.
I saw Regis' laser hand.
Yeah, sorry, I can't see the hands. Ah, yeah, sure, Regis.
Yeah. Yes, I'm under the sun's light, sorry. I'm not very visible. So I wanted first to thanks the beginning to launch this working group. I think we have a big expectation, I mean, from France. I think it's very important that we deliver really recommendation or really deep insights that give added value for government. My question, maybe to just to launch, maybe something that could be in the working group. I always wonder if there is consensus on the three all for human risk related to humidity and temperature. So because I've seen many literature on that, and I think, I think that if you want to have a common vision on not only comfort, but health risk, we need to understand when it could be defined as something that government should avoid. Because I think that passive construction have their benefits, but there are their limits as well. So and the approach is not to, as you said in your mission, to reduce active cooling. So when active cooling will be needed to secure health, not for comfort.
Yeah, sure. I think, thanks, Regis, for adding this very important element, that of safety, thermal safety, which is defined in various pieces of literature and some standards. It definitely needs more research probably or a good review of what exists. Again, this might be one of the activities. Let's see how we can get organized. We can start immediately to collect some of the most recent papers and publications on this and maybe look at more, a more deep work of reviewing. In any way, anyway, this opposite, these other aspects of safety is a big element to support the development implementation of passive measures, because we will need active maybe or increased passive measures to export energy from the buildings. But some of those rely on electricity, and we see under extreme events that sometimes that electricity is not available for hours or days. So a good envelope will help us to overcome the most acute parts of the crisis, and then obviously, active will be part of restoring safety and comfort. So looking forward...
Because I expressed that, because we stress that point under the cast sunshine. Maybe you will not, you will notice that, that the question is to read, to do, to say, to say when to reduce the time we are, you need to go to active. But to say, okay, there is maybe some part of time that we need to have active. But as well, the equipment has to be designed to be complementary as well.
Fully agree. Lots of work to do. So that's why we need all these contributions from all of us. Any other raised hands, which I can't see? And thanks, Gennai, for supporting and looking at who is trying to intervene. We continue to see a lot of informations in the chat, which we will look carefully.
Yeah, thanks, Lorenzo. So I think that in the interest of time, maybe we can move to the next, like, general member discussion? Maybe in the, in the five minutes? So yeah, if you have any, like, questions, like a general question, broader question or any other comments about this working group in general, please come, come in and raise your hand and come and speak. Maybe...
Yeah, maybe you can take away the... Yeah, thanks.
Okay, yeah, sure, sure. Let me get back to the previous slide. Ah, sorry. If, if possible, would you like to take a member photo? So if you don't mind, could you please switch on your camera so that we can see everyone's face and, you know, like, to feel more people?
Can I also, can you remove this slide sharing? Maybe that's better.
Okay. Yeah, thank you very much, everyone. So yeah, now we can see everyone's face. So if you have any comments or questions, please feel free to come in. Ah, okay, I can see the hand from Iman, please.
Yes, hello, everybody. I'm Imen Gawit. I'm representing the International Union of Architects, the UIA. Actually, we, this group's focus is very important during this mandate to us in UIA. You know that we have our forum next... And we will be launching several calls for several publication. One of them is the SDG Guidebook, that we are known for developing each two years. Another new one is the Wisdom of Tradition. One is focused more on the vernacular architecture and how the, our focus of this group used to be very effective in old ages. Still, there are valuable lessons to be learned from these practices nowadays in order to prevent the active ACs, the active cooling process. We have also another project focusing on the evaluation of the SDG. Now, it is 30. We have several webinars this month and several months, and next one, according to what we are dealing with, with the Kuala Lumpur Forum. I would like to welcome everybody to join us in our invitation for these webinars and preferably to share the invitation for their students or their colleagues to submit their projects in the guidebooks that we are mentioning now. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Iman, and Rosie, please.
Hello, hi, everyone. I'm Rosie, Principal Architect of Masons Ying Studio from India. I'm representing Architecture 2030. Thank you for the presentation. There's a lot more clarity from, I think, the first time we met at Paris. So great work, Gennai and the others, for putting this together. I just had some questions from the presentation. One was, it was mentioned that there would be three kinds of aspects or verticals for passive design strategies: spatial design, construction, and material. And third one was operational strategies. So I just wanted some clarity on what that, what operational strategies would mean when we're talking about passive cooling.
Maybe La Zhang coming.
Thanks, thanks, Roy. So when we talked about passive design strategies on operational side, let me give you two example. Let's say if you are looking at mixed-mode ventilation or mixed-mode operation, talk about, talking about that, the window operation becomes very, very important. What point in time one need to open a window? One point in time, what one needs to close the windows? Whether direct solar radiation is falling on the window pane and not falling on the window pane? So these are the things even architect or engineer has kept in mind. It is very important that user understands the operational part of it and does not get affected by a wrong operation negatively. So that's one example. Second example I can give you is about the stack effects. Again, at some point in time, you may want to close some of the operations of the fenestrations, which are, which are located at the higher, higher level to avoid the stack effect when, when heavy moist air is moving around. Even the design has a provision of opening and closing, but somebody needs to understand that when to open and when to close, and not just relying on controls all the time to operate the buildings. Hopefully, that helps you. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you, thank you so much. I'm really glad that from the examples as well, there's also this aspect of vernacular that's been brought in and examples from the vernacular, and I'm hoping to contribute to that aspect. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Rosie. Do you have any questions from our participants? Or... Okay, thank you, Rosie. Do you have any questions from our participants or reflection, observations? Okay, so if not, we want to quote this meeting, but before that, let me mention a couple of things. So we are planning the next meeting somewhere in the first week in December, which is going to be held online too. So we will announce once the details are confirmed. We are planning to invite some country project to present their work on passive cooling. But in the coming, you know, regular meetings, we also want want to hear from you all what you are doing in your space, in your project experiences. So if you want to leverage this working group to showcase your work, please reach out to our co-chairs and us and UNEP to, you know, to to request your presentation under this working group meeting so that we co-chairs can discuss and arrange for the presentation appropriately. If we get a lot of requests, we need to sort of discuss who's going to come first and and next. But, yeah, we are trying to cover everyone's voice. And also, yeah, after this meeting, we are sharing with you the recording of this meeting and as well as follow-up informations. Actually, from the Cool Coalition side, we are having the heat mapping sort of workshop event pretty soon. So we want to invite you, all of you, to this workshop. If you are interested in, please feel free to join in. And also, we want to share the questionnaire, which we are currently developing to track the policy progress on passive cooling, which respond to the requirement of the Global Cooling Project. So basically, with this questionnaire, we are going to ask our countries to 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 report their progress on passive cooling, but we need some support to enhance this questionnaire. So we are circulating with you the draft. So if you have time, please check and review and get back to us. And so basically, so there is no obligations to our members. Like you have to do this, you have to do that. It's more of the voluntary community. However, we are really appreciate if you can actively contribute to our work. Because we, Global ABC and the Cool Coalition, we are currently thinking to develop some guidelines and roadmap where we need your support and contributions to develop the content. And if you contribute to that, of course, we want to acknowledge your name in the publications, your organization. We want to acknowledge your organization's name as well in the publications, if possible. So yeah, I hope everyone would be interested in that. So, but, yeah, we will following up with email later after this meeting. And so if you have any more questions, we want to close this meeting. So thank you very much for the fantastic presentation from Eva and also the co-chairs who organized this meeting and, of course, all the participants from across the world. And we are looking forward to the further collaboration with this working group. So thank you very much all.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Gennai. Thanks, all the co-chairs. Bye.
Thank you. Bye.
Thank you and wish good luck for your work.
Thanks, Eva. Thanks to everyone. Great start.